Start it and everybody get back on.
Agreed.
Um, just real quick, I'm looking, do we have all the commission members see Joe? Um.
I don't see Mr. Valada.
Yeah, I don't see Mr. Valada, although we could start without him because we do have a quorum. Um.
He's normally not on on video.
Yeah.
Well, he's not on at all. I don't.
I don't see him on the list. Well, he can always jump in, but I guess since we have a quorum, we could at least get the the public hearing started since we're a little bit behind and we want to restart. So Susan, if you're ready, we'll do that.
Sure.
All right, I'd like to call to order the uh Mastodon Planning Commission uh public hearing for March fifteenth twenty twenty one. Oh, no. Uh, can we get a roll call?
Sure. Mr. Westbrook?
Here.
Mr. Sheavon?
Here.
Mr. Cox?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
And Mr. Valada is not on.
All right, um, so I guess uh and Mr. Mr. France, if you could advise me on this, we've got three items here for for public comment. Do we announce each one separately? Give each one a minute or so, you know, see if anybody's on, then then go to the next one.
Yeah, I think um you're having a public meeting meeting for three different items. And they're all scheduled for five fifteen, so I would advise the public, you have three separate items, list them out according to the agenda and then give a minute for each one and um and then close the public hearing.
Okay. All right, well, the first item is Dominion Energy proposing a conditional use of the building replacement located on Eastern Aurora Road at Alexandria Way. Um, is there anyone here from the public that wishes to comment on this? Or is there anything uh any emails or anything, Susan, to read?
I did not receive any emails or letters.
All right. Uh, is anyone on here wish to speak from the public on this? Um, hearing none. Um, I will uh move on to the next one. Uh, the second one is Space Place. Um, proposing conditional use approval for a new storage building. And and for this one, uh, I think there was a misstatement. Um, it says a B two community shopping district is actually G I General Industrial District. Um, is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this one? And I know we do have, I think, correspondence on this one. Susan, if you would like to read that.
Sure. I have an email from Craig Fussner from Standard Signs Incorporated. I guess it's the uh property right next door. And he is requesting that where the property lines meet, the fencing is a privacy fence and as tall as the city will allow. In addition to that, if it's possible, to please position some landscape mounds and plant pine trees near the proper.
Is that it?
That's it.
Oh, okay. Shoot, I'm sorry. I was muted there. I muted myself. I was talking away. Sorry. Okay, the last one, I don't think I all of that that I read. Uh, Spruce Hill proposing approval for a zoning certificate to permit a planned unit development within the R one zoning district located at Spruce Hill. Um, is there anyone here from the public that wishes to speak on this one? Um, hearing none, uh, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Uh, so move.
I'll second.
All right, a motion second. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
No nays. All right, so we will close the public hearing. Um, we're gonna, since we're having some potentially technical difficulties, some people can't see anything. We're gonna ask that everybody drop out. Susan's gonna restart the meeting and we'll all try to get back in.
Oh, dear. What do we, but close our, close our our phones off?
Yeah, and just go back to this invitation.
Hey, before we do that, I've got a notice here. Microsoft is having technical issues that are impacting their global customers. As a result, you may experience intermittent service when using Office three sixty five, which includes SharePoint and Teams.
That's it.
So like, most likely, it's not gonna change anything if we get off and we may make things worse.
It may not, yeah.
Yeah.
For that reason, maybe we'll just stay on, be happy with what we've got.
I'd be safe.
Hopefully, get by with uh without needing the visual for any of this, and I apologize to the applicants. Uh, but we'll uh we'll wait until about five thirty and we'll get started again. Um, Susan, do you have uh? Um, Mr. Valada's number handy?
Yeah, would you like me to call him?
Maybe just to make sure that he's he's getting for the regular meeting.
Me calling for his post.
All right, we'll start up here and get in like five minutes. Thanks.
Kevin, could I ask a question while we're waiting to Brian?
He's not that related to one of the issues.
Yeah, it is related to one of the cases.
It probably should wait to get into the thing just to be official.
All right.
Sorry.
Okay, so I talked to him and he said it just keeps saying that he's connecting and he can't get through. So I told him to try the difference link that's on the website and he said he tried that too and he still can't get on.
Maybe call it.
Yeah, is there a, is there a just a plain phone number he could use?
I don't think so. And I'm still admitting people, so I know that it's working. Other people have just joined.
This won't move for some reason. What the fuck is the matter with that?
Okay. Oh. I can't see anything, can you?
We're having some uh technical difficulties and it sounds like it could be on Microsoft's end, whoever has uh gotten on recently. Um, where there's, some people are not able to see the video feed. Uh, it sounds like it's a Microsoft issue. Um, so we're hoping we can just do the best with what we've got. Um, hopefully it doesn't you know, make this too difficult. Um, Susan, it's five thirty. Guess we could get started. If that's okay with you.
Yeah, you want me to roll call?
Yeah, I'll call to order the uh March fifteenth Mastodon Planning Commission. Uh, yes, can we get a roll call?
Sure. Mr. Westbrook?
Here.
Mr. Sheavon?
Here.
Mr. Cox?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
And we know Mr. Valada is having technical difficulties.
Yes, um, okay, for the first item is approval of the February eighth twenty twenty one meeting minutes. Um, anybody have any comments on this?
No.
Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All right, uh, Susan, could we do a roll call for this one since I gotta abstain?
Sure. Mr. Westbrook?
Abstain.
Mr. Sheavon?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
All right. Easy thing down. All right, the first item. Um, is uh C S Spruce LLC is proposing approval for a zoning certificate to permit a planned unit development within the R one zone district zoning district located at Spruce Hill Development. Um, as well as uh they're proposing a preliminary and final site plan approval for phase three and four of the Spruce Hill Crossing Development. Um. It's my understanding this was approved in the past, but due to timing issues, uh, the uh permit was uh has expired. Um, all probably COVID related, um, but unfortunately, we've got to go through the process again. Um, just to do it right. Um, so. I don't know, since we've we've, I think, well, I think Mr. Roberts was probably not on the board at the time.
He was.
Is that right?
No, I wasn't on the board at that time.
Um, I guess uh, Mr. Koblenz, are you, are you leading this for your for the?
Yeah, yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me okay?
Yep, yep.
Okay, yeah, now we uh, yeah, see uh C uh E L uh one, I guess is LLC was got the approval back in December of sixteen of two thousand nineteen. And then we ended up buying, I ended up buying the property last year and uh we're getting the final uh, you know, all the final um engineering done. And um, we submitted it just a couple of days after, maybe a week after um the approval ran out, not knowing the date. And not knowing it was only good for a year, I guess, so um, we're just asking for reapproval of the of the um plan and preliminary plan and uh get the final approval too for the, because we have all the engineering done. Um, most of our approvals are are finalized too with the uh with the utilities. Um, the only other thing that we're changing is I'd like to split it into two phases, phase one and phase two. Uh, right now it's thirty six units and we'd like to have um, you know, eighteen units in phase one and eighteen units in phase two. Um, you know, we're a small builder. Um, the original builder was uh Cajavian and they were gonna, you know, thirty six units is a one-year project. For us, us, it's more like a three-year project, so it helps us if we can split it into a smaller uh, two smaller phases instead of one larger phase.
Okay.
I think that's um, any questions, you know, let me know and can answer them.
Um, Mr. France, um, I'd be start with you with, you know, having the um zoning certificate as well as the plan approval. Um, maybe you can kind of advise on the best way to tackle this if we if you want to give an overview of what we've got to accomplish or what we have to show for the approvals.
Sure, um, so you'd have two items that you'd be looking at this evening. Um, the conditional zoning certificate and that you should take a separate vote on that. This should be your first vote. And I I um, I didn't conduct a separate report uh for that, but I I don't see any concern with um just recommending approval of that conditional zoning certificate. It does by ordinance um require council approval, um, which is a little different, but um it does state that in uh eleven sixty three oh two five of the of the code. Um, but I don't see any concern over that issue. And then on the site plan, I think the applicant is requesting preliminary and final this evening. Um, I'll start with the end and work my way backwards. I don't have a concern with issuing preliminary and final tonight. We've talked about this development a number of times. I just think there's a few items that never was um sort of buttoned up with those, you know, kind of these housekeeping items, if you will. So I can run through real quick. Um, one item that's pretty, you know, pretty straightforward, but it's my understanding that Mr. Koblenz is planning to use the existing covenants or restrictions um that are uh that are in place for the other um first phases of development, and that's no problem, but those do have to be set forth to the commission as part of the record for preliminary and final plan approval. And then um would of course need to be recorded as part of this phase. I don't think there's anything, any showstoppers there. Um, but that's a is an item that's required. And then uh eleven thirteen oh two five requires a construction agreement and bond. I think I saw an email go out about this and the city's looking for, I think Mr. Gelati might have an update on this, but they're they're gonna use one of their standard agreements from the past, so that's nothing I think that should hold up anything at this point, but there's a requirement on the subdivision regulation. I believe it's in motion. Um, there's a number of items under eleven thirteen oh nine for final plat approval. I think they've met them all, but the applicant should just confirm, check the boxes that everything has been met under eleven thirteen oh nine. Um, and then a couple of actions of the commission as it relates to the development, I think you should um you should deal with uh, you should deal with these as part of the site plan as opposed to the conditional zoning certificate. The eleven sixty three oh five H um requires streets to be designed in accordance with the subdivision regulations, which does include curbs and sidewalks. Um, but the applicant is uh proposing this as a a private road, which is what the previous developer is gonna do and um and therefore um is not uh proposing full sidewalks um throughout the development. That is something that the commission can waive, and I think they did waive the last time this came in. The plan looks as far as the sidewalks go, looks the same as what was previously there. And then um uh Sheets two and two point one are the plans that provide details for lighting and landscaping. Um, the planning commission really will need to determine if that lighting style is acceptable. And then the spacing and photometrics need to be reviewed and approved. Um, either uh the engineer typically looks at the spacing, either one of us can look at those photometrics. And then um eleven twenty one eleven of the sub regs do require two street trees per lot. Um, and the proposal is to have ten street trees, which again is consistent with the earlier approval. Um, and that's proposed near the road extension into the this these two phases. This would be phase three and four, as Mr. Koblenz said previously, it was gonna be done as one. I I have no concern with taking it down to two phases. Um, so that's not a problem. It's identified as such on the plan. And then uh with regard to landscaping, the type of street tree I don't think is labeled on the plan. It should be in a typical section for the tree be provided on the plan, again, just a documentation issue. Um, the applicant could um certainly work with the service department to identify what type of street trees are um acceptable. Um, the city has a number of preferred species. Again, these are gonna be private streets, but I think to keep consistent with what the public streets are, it makes sense to just reach out and find out what makes sense on the type of tree. Um, and then again, that lighting, the commission really should determine that lighting style is acceptable. And then uh, as I stated earlier, it does require a conditional zoning certificate. You had your public hearing for that tonight. That does um take a step towards to uh council. So this time, I think most of the items are minor in the report. Um, and could be handled by a final administrative review, so I'd recommend approval of the preliminary finals subject to the comments noted.
Great, thank you. That's uh, that's helpful. Um, and we'll probably come back to a couple of things. Basically, before we get too far, uh, Mr. Gelati, you on there? I hear somewhere. Think you're muted if you're talking.
Yeah, sorry about that, Chairman. I'm working blind here still. I still have no video. I don't know if others on the meeting still have the same problem that was going on before. But um, um, but I do have the audio, so we'll do the best we can. Um. Uh, anyways, I I think everyone has seen uh my comments uh from uh ten days ago here. Uh, I'll quickly go through them. Um, the new road transitions from existing twenty six down to twenty four for phases three and four. Uh, I I don't think that'll be a problem. In fact, I think it's appropriate. Uh, sidewalk will need to be shown as was approved a couple of years ago and CEV was the developer. Uh, and and to my comments, I attached the piece of legislation and exhibit that council approved, basically the sidewalk uh needs to uh extend down to what is now known as subplot eighty eight. So that was uh, that was the previous approval um approved by council. Uh, I have no issue breaking uh the subdivision up into a phase three and four. Uh, that's certainly fine from an engineering point of view. Um, compliance with regulations for uh possible wetlands on the property that can be handled in an administrative uh review. Uh, the typical section should be shown on the plans for the pavement, pavement typical section. Uh, it's not um, you know, we would um want to see the typical section indicating that the pavement and curb would be indicative of of uh what's normally a public subdivision. Uh, and then lastly, uh, back in nineteen when this was approved, the emergency drive was approved as permeable pavers. Uh, the current submittal indicates that it's gravel. Um, code actually says it needs to be asphalt or concrete. Um, so I I have to assume that permeable pavers was uh the deal or what was approved by planning commission back in nineteen. So I think planning commission uh as well as fire department would want to maintain uh the permeable pavers uh at a minimum for the material uh for that emergency driveway. Thanks, Chairman.
All right, I got I got a question or two for you. So with regards to the sidewalk, I think, and you can help me try to remember Mr. France too, or maybe in the other commission members, I think we could maybe was it the case that we waived the sidewalk requirement and then council asked for them to take it farther? And I guess I I can, not everybody will be able to see this. I'll share um your 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 comments here, which included the council uh acceptance, the council ordinance. And in here, they talk about uh the sidewalk as depicted in the attached exhibit.
Yeah.
Which um I believe, whoops. There is sidewalk in the plan proposed up to Kelly Drive and then what's shown here in gold up to what used to be called seventeen, which is now gonna be like eighty eight.
Yeah.
Here at the corners. And not the blue. So I think like, you know, before before anybody waved anything, we'd have to have sidewalk everywhere. And then we said doesn't need to be and council added this gold piece in, is that?
Yeah, I I that's kind of what happened. Uh, as I recall, Chairman, um, in in one way or another, the issue was referred to city council. Um, between CEV and city council and uh I guess we'll call it the compromise that was reached um at that council meeting was to install sidewalk uh to what is now gonna be called subplot eighty eight for that um what's shown in the yellow on the attachment there.
Okay.
So. So I I think we need to, you know, here we are a couple of years later, but I think we need to honor or follow uh that piece of legislation.
Okay, Mr. Co or Mr. France, you got, looked like you were gonna say something.
Well, I was gonna say that um I think you accurately recalled the matter when we talked about the sidewalks and I think the commission did um as part of the process did uh waive the the sidewalks. So I remember specifically talking about the blue piece and then I think it was agreed to waive it entirely. Um, and I don't know, you know, I think having this conversation with Mr. Koblenz now is important because if the council could require it when they see this back for the conditional zoning certificate, so even if playing commission you know, waived it, they could add it back in. So it's best to have the conversation now. Yeah, it seems like that where it stops, where we have it shown makes the most sense, but you know, if they wanted to add it back in again, I guess they could. Um, you know, you're getting into sub lots now where um the other is just taking it through that easement along the main street. That's that's my take on it, but.
Yeah, I guess would you, would you have objection to to doing the sidewalks? I mean, I don't know laterally if 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 and can you see what I've got up on the screen? Are you one of the ones that can see the video?
Yeah, I can see.
Okay. Yeah, it was drawn in up here, but you know, it doesn't necessarily have to be there. I mean, wherever, you know, it could be out here, I would, I would guess. So it just where somebody quickly drew a highlighter. You know, to be with this, if you if you did it here, would you object to that?
Um, you know, I just think uh it would need to stop um short of seventeen or right in the back of seventeen. So then you're kind of adding um, you know, just a few feet of it because making that corner realistically, people landscaped the corner lot. Um, actually on both of them will probably have landscaping up to the corner. So now you're adding a sidewalk which limits the amount of, you know, cover you give for that, for those two corners. But you know, aesthetically, it will look better to have landscaping versus a sidewalk to nowhere.
And I guess I'm not sure what what is a And I guess I'm not sure what is, you know, I think the commission, at least, the previous time through, we thought, you know, from whatever was discussed, that it seemed to make sense to not do any more sidewalk in this development from where it was shown up before. You know, we could recommend it that way. It may or may not make it through council that way. I don't know if it's easier to control it by saying, you'll take it up to Eighty-Eight right now, or, you know, or we do what we did before, and we exclude it and let council decide what to do with it beyond that. Yeah, based on the width of the right of way, I think not necessarily where the gold line is shown, but it would be out closer to the street, still leaving, you know, some room for landscaping and things like that.
Yeah, you know, Sixty-seven it would, but when you get over to Eighty-Eight, that's when it's going to get really close. You're within ten, fifteen feet. So we could stop it in back of Eighty-Eight.
Is it possible, am I going to ask a question on that issue?
Please, please do.
This was going to be the question I was going to ask while we were having the hiatus there. It was all about that sidewalk. We voted back in May of nineteen to waive the sidewalk because the applicant asked us to, because he didn't think they needed it for this type of development. Now, what I understood, council has to take this conditional, this conditional use and rule on it all over again. And what I saw from that chart you showed, Kevin, was that their main issue was moving it down from ten lots, which the applicant wanted, to six lots. And then the sidewalk was sort of added back in. Why don't we, if it's got to go back to them anyway, why don't we let them add in that back in again, instead of trying to figure out what to do? Again, we waived the whole thing for the whole development, no sidewalk, and let council, if it's got to go back to them anyway, let them figure out what they want to do with sidewalks. Maybe it's not that important to them. That would be my suggestion.
Okay.
Wave it all over again, and it's got to go back to them anyway, I think, the whole conditional use, right?
Yeah, it does. Yeah. Any other commission members have any thoughts on that? Mr. Schron or Mr. Roberts?
No.
I agree with Mr. Cox, I think, on that. I think that's a prudent way to go right now.
So, question, does it have to go back to them if it was approved less than a year ago? This resolution was two years ago, I guess, but the approval from the preliminary was less than a year ago.
Yeah, Chris, Joe Gelati here. I would, you know, I would say that the council resolution, it's Resolution Thirty-Eight, Two Thousand and Nineteen, which indicates it was probably later in the year of Two Thousand and Nineteen, so that would be more than twelve months ago.
Yeah, it was May, May, twenty nineteen. So, yeah, so we'll have to go back. I'd be okay with sticking with our original thoughts of not having, waiving the sidewalk requirement, let council, if they feel it's important, require it back in, if the other commission members are okay with that.
Yeah, I'd move that as a, you know, separate item. I'd make a little motion on that one alone, and then let council figure it out.
Then jumping back to a couple of other things that I heard, the permeable pavers for the emergency access, Mr. Coblenz, I think that's what we had kind of agreed to before with the previous approval. Would you be okay doing that? Have any objections to that?
You know, I think we had drawn as gravel, but, I mean, if that's, it's not a permanent road, but we would be, I guess I wouldn't have objections to doing it permeable pavers or asphalt or concrete, which I think is what Joe's recommendation was. Did I get that right, Joe?
Yeah, Chris, yes, I think that's correct. I would think that at a minimum, you know, we would need to uphold the, I guess, the approval from the previous developer, which is permeable pavers. You know, certainly asphalt or concrete would be acceptable, and maybe it's a better way for you to go. I don't know. I guess that's your choice, Chris, but I think would have to be one of those three.
Okay.
Okay, as long as you're okay with one of those, because I think we did have extensive talks, and I think Mr. Bell's not here tonight, but I think he weighed in on the ability to get back in there, needing to be something better than gravel. So I guess I'd be okay with, you know, at a minimum of permeable pavers, but if you wanted to go asphalt or concrete, I think that would probably be okay unless somebody else in the commission had a different thought. Lighting, I think, you know, a photometric plan could be approved administratively, like Mr. France said. I'm looking at the light detail. That's the one we, I think we would like to get. It's more decorative. We've been pushed a few times to get the more plain one. If this is what you're proposing, personally, I think this is what we would like to have.
I guess I would like to be consistent with the rest of the development, so I'm not sure what that, what is in the other phases.
Yeah.
Yeah, Chris and Chairman, the other phases, I believe, have the typical Macedonia colonial decorative style pole. And while I can't actually see the proposal on my screen, I think that's what the developer is proposing to use.
Yes, this is that decorative one with the fluted pole, and it's just, yeah, it's a lot nicer looking.
Yeah, we should.
Okay, that's, that would be great. Yeah, I'm looking, I'm looking at Google, and that's what's out there now.
Okay.
So we're going with the more decorative one? Is that what you're saying?
That's what he's proposed, and I think that's what the city would prefer, so as long as everybody's good with that. Mr. France, so about the covenants and restrictions, he wants to use the same ones, but is that something that we need to see, or he just needs to resubmit to the building department?
I think it's fine. If they're this, if it's the existing, it's going to mirror the existing, that's, I don't think, a problem. And Mr. Coblenz can let us know that, but I'm pretty sure that's the case.
Yes, yeah, we'll just, there will be a document that allows us to join.
Oh, you're going to join, so you won't have a separate, Phase Three and Four won't have a separate association, you're going to join theirs and assume those?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
That's what they did in Phase Two.
Yeah, so I think you should just stipulate that under your approval this evening, and then Mr. Coblenz can just submit that for the record, a recorded copy for Phase Three and Four, once he has his approval.
Okay. I've done a lot of talking, commission, other commission members, do you guys, oh, Mr. Valada is here. Cool.
Hi.
Hello. Other commission members, anybody have any questions or concerns? Okay. Well, maybe we want to tackle the conditional zoning certificate first. With this, Mr. France, can we just make a motion to approve that, or is there anything that's got to be, these different issues that we're talking about, is that more tied to the site plan approval? And the conditional zoning can just be approved, recommended if we so choose?
Yeah, I think you just recommend approval of the conditional zoning certificate. I'm assuming those other issues about density on the, on any given acre, those were worked out. I know there was a lot of discussion with the law director, and I think that was eventually worked out.
Yes, that was, we have documentation that that was signed off by the city.
Yeah, great. So I would just say that you would just recommend approval of the conditional zoning certificate. And then the sidewalk piece, you can, you can just deal with on the site plan approval.
Okay. All right, then I will make a motion to approve the conditional zoning certificate for Spruce Hill Crossing Phases Three and Four. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Mr. Cox. Susan, can we do a roll call?
Sure. Mr. Westbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Chivon?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Valada?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Halfway down. All right. And then second would be the final site plan approval, or preliminary and final site plan approval, with the conditions, I'll make the motion, but approval of the preliminary and final site plan approval, the conditions that the covenants and restrictions are submitted to the city for approval. Final lighting and landscaping plans are submitted for administrative approval. Permeable pavers, asphalt or concrete is used for the emergency access. Sidewalks are waived in the new phases. I think that's everything. That's all I have on my notes. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Any more discussion on that?
Mr. Westbrook, if I may?
Yeah, please do.
Yeah, just the sidewalk waiting comment is pursuant to the site plan submitted date, application dated February seventeenth, Two Thousand and Twenty-One, site plan dated two eighteen twenty-one. Just to be clear, because there is some sidewalk in this, in Phases Three and Four of the development, albeit not much, and it stops as it comes into the actual subplot portion, but if you waive it completely, you'd be waiving all of that. I don't think that's in your plan.
Right, so I will include that.
I think I heard you say that, so I just wanted to clarify.
You did hear me say that. Any other discussion? Mr. Cox, anything? Schron?
No.
Mr. Valada? Anything? Any questions?
No comment.
Mr. Roberts?
I don't know if this is splitting hairs, but where that sidewalk on the plan is, is it just going to terminate, or would it kind of curve into the street like the one in the earlier phase does?
I would think it would need to terminate like the other phases do.
So some kind of ramp or something like that?
Yeah.
Out to the curb?
Yeah, taken into the street, like it does at the intersection of Spruce Hill Drive and White Spruce Drive. Kind of like a little S curve or something there.
Yeah, I mean, the emergency drive's right across the street, I could, we could just put a ninety and put it towards Spruce Hill Drive, is that what you were thinking?
Yeah, I'm just thinking, so as a user of sidewalks, especially with kids on bikes and all that, if it just terminates in grass or something, that's kind of awkward, where if it kind of curves to the street or something to dump the traffic, that's just, I know it might be splitting hairs, but just something like.
No, I agree. I think, you know, the thing is with a dead-end sidewalk, there's really never a good place to end it. I think wherever you end it, it'll be somewhat awkward.
It will be, yeah.
You know, do you want to dump people off on the street, or just leave them in the landscaping? But if we, if you wanted a connection to the street, I would prefer going to the east to the main street, just because that secondary road right there has a steeper grade.
Yeah, yeah. I'm just saying, bring it to some street, you guys could decide which one is the least awkward, but I was just thinking, like, a homeowner there that might landscape that corner, might do something weird around the end of the sidewalk or something, you know, and there might not be anything that keeps them from doing that. So if the sidewalk is going into a street, then they have to work with that.
Gotcha. Yep.
Yep, I agree.
Not a problem.
Good idea. All right, any other discussion? All right, Susan, you want to do a roll call?
Sure. Mr. Westbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Chivon?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Valada?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
All right, thank you, guys.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right, I'm glad you got it through, and hopefully you get this one going now.
Yep, thank you.
On the agenda is Space Place for conditional use approval for new storage buildings. And again, this is a G.I., General Industrial District, and then also is, they're asking for preliminary site plan approval for four new storage buildings located on parcel thirty-three dash zero three zero one five. Who's here for Space Place?
I'm here, Joseph Cranch.
All right. Why don't you go ahead and give us an overview? I think, you know, we've all seen the plans and the comments, but just kind of to give a brief overview to make sure we understand exactly what's going on.
Sure, I think it's fairly simple project. We have a storage facility located about a thousand feet south of this property. This facility will more or less be a continuation of that facility. We're putting up a few buildings, privacy fencing, landscaping, we only have one neighbor really, and to the east of us is the railroad line, to the west and north of us is Highway Two Seventy-One. And like I said, we're going to, we plan on putting up a few buildings, putting some asphalt down for parking, and that's pretty much it.
Okay, I'm going to see if I can pull up for, again, for some people who can see, some won't be able to. Just pull up a couple of things here. Share the right screen. All right, so your existing site, freeway drive here, Space Place, and then this will be just up the road in this triangle area, correct?
Correct.
Can see, hopefully you're one of the ones that can see. So it's a little bit unconventional, just because you've got facilities separate, and I, from what I think I read, the operations will still be taking place down at the, you know, at your main site with the office and everything down there, this will just be a remote half of your storage area, correct?
It'll be less than half, but yes, we operate a similar facility on Barber Road in Norton, Ohio, very similar, where we're across the street from each other, and it works the same way.
Just curious, are there remote gates? Well, I guess, I guess, most of those facilities have your own scan or punch code anyway when you go in, you don't necessarily need the office to be right there to let you in.
Correct. The only time they really need the office, well, even honestly, now with everything being online, you can rent without necessarily going into the office, but generally on the move-in is the only time that there's a face-to-face interaction with an employee to a customer.
Okay, all right. I guess maybe start again with Mr. France, if you'd like to go over any thoughts and comments you have on this.
Sure. I, the only question I have to the applicant before I go into my preliminary development plan report, so will, there isn't any outdoor storage being proposed, so just the proposed storage buildings, I didn't see any on the site plan?
I believe that there would be outdoor parking for boats and RVs proposed. It's certainly not a deal breaker for us, and if the city doesn't want it, we don't have to have it. But I think we are proposing, where the power lines are located on the south side of the property, we would have outdoor storage for boats and RVs, since the city of Macedonia doesn't allow parking of boats and RVs in driveways or people's residence, you know, in residential districts, so there's a lot of demand for that in the city of Macedonia.
So I would say, well, that's not on your site plan, and that's why I asked the question, and that buries additional or different requirements for screening, for setbacks and such, so, and my recommendation to the planning commission is, because it wasn't on the site plan, was to add that to your conditional zoning. So if the, if planning commission's inclined to approve that this evening, I would recommend they approve it, subject to no outdoor storage. If you're requesting that, I think that does need to be shown on the plan and accurately... If you're requesting that, I think that does need to be shown on the plan and accurately depicted. Where, where that would be.
We would be fine if the approval is no outdoor storage, and if that ever changed in the future, we could always come back and ask for a variance at that time also.
Yeah, or you could just ask for approval. I don't, not sure if there's a variance needed or not, that could be evaluated, but.
But, right, then maybe that's time sticker and approval or whatever, but it's certainly not necessary for us at this time to get that approved.
Yeah, this is Lori with Wouen. It was my understanding that we could get our conditional use to move forward or request for conditional use permit on the site. And then the outdoor storage, we would make a new application and have another public hearing and request that at that time.
Yeah, I, and you, you certainly could do that, um, that way. Again, it's not on, on this site plan, so I asked that question for, for that reason. Um, my, uh, my recommendation again to the commission with regard to the conditional zoning certificate approval is to add that as a stipulation, no outdoor storage, um, just as depicted on the site plan submitted this evening. So, um, and commission, you, uh, you guys, as you talk through the conditional use piece of it, um, because you do need a separate motion, um, you can talk through that outdoor storage piece. And then I can, I can go ahead and talk about the preliminary development plan comments.
Please do.
Um, so my report, uh, dated February twenty-eighth, um, regarding the preliminary development plan. Um, and as the applicant said, they're proposing for, um, mini storage buildings or warehouses on approximately the four acre parcel that you showed here just a, a minute ago. Um, the buildings are, uh, six thousand two hundred and fifty square feet, five thousand nine hundred and fifty square feet, and ten thousand one hundred and fifty square feet and nine thousand seven hundred and fifty square feet. Um, that's sort of the breakdown of each of the, the four fractures. Um, and then added to that on the site, there's a stormwater management basin, and that basin is supposed to be, um, fenced with a, a six-foot chain link fence. Um, so my, uh, my first comment, um, with regard to landscaping and screening, eleven sixty-nine oh four H of the code requires all yards to be landscaped and provide adequate screening. Um, so the preliminary landscape plan on sheet C five does propose fourteen trees, mixture of arborvitae and red bud, um, along freeway drive frontage. Um, I felt that that's a, a good start, but more landscaping is needed um, to comply with the code. At a minimum, I believe, landscape beds, um, which would include shrubs and flowers, um, be added to the landscape, uh, to the freeway drive landscaping frontage. And then also, some landscaping should be added around the stormwater management basin, as well as along the south property line. Landscaping's a cheap way to, um, to really, uh, um, spruce up the site and, uh, you know, and out, uh, storage buildings aren't necessarily the most attractive thing, and that's not a knock, but that's just the reality. And so more landscaping just draws the eye to the, to the, um, softened landscaping versatility, so. Um, the code does, uh, require, um, a mixture of deciduous and coniferous species. So I think on the next to middle, um, a more defined landscape plan, uh, would be good. Um, item two, the conditional zoning certificates, as we know, is required for this and follows section eleven thirty-seven, um, oh four of the code. And then, uh, the third item, which will require some planning commission action, eleven seventy-one eighteen C, which is, um, a section that deals with, um, specifically storage units, uh, requires a thousand-foot setback for the use from any residential building, not zoning district from a building. Um, the commission can approve a, a reduced setback, no less than five hundred feet, provided they determine the proposal doesn't have any adverse impacts on the nearby residential. I understand there's railroad tracks and freeway that we're dealing with, it's a code requirement. Um, so I, uh, I did think that if the commission determines the five hundred feet's acceptable, um, the proposal does comply. Um, residential homes on White Spruce, Ledge, and Isabella are outside of the five hundred feet, but within the thousand. So the commission felt that that five hundred was acceptable, um, which I do think it's acceptable, given the site circumstances with the freeway and the railroad tracks. Um, but you would just need to make that ruling here this evening that five hundred feet's acceptable. Um, if not, then the request would have to go for a variance from the board of zoning appeals. Um, eleven sixty-nine oh four F two provides greater setback and screening standards, as I stated earlier, for outdoor storage. It sounds like the applicant's willing to, um, submit to no outdoor storage. Um, and again, none is noted on the plan, so that's a, uh, really not an issue at this point during the planning process. Would recommend that that be attached to the conditional use approval if the commission were so inclined to approve that this evening. Um, and then eleven seventy-one eleven C provides for, um, off-street parking. This is probably the one of the more significant issues, um, because the applicant is, uh, proposing, um, forty-two gravel land banked off-street parking spaces. The code requires forty-one hard-surfaced off-street parking spaces. There really is no provision for land banking in the code. Um, so, uh, as proposed, um, the planning commission can't, uh, take action on that request. That will need to go to the board of zoning appeals, um, for A, for the gravel parking, as well as, um, I guess you'd call it land banking or zero parking on the site, um, at this time. So that's something we'd have to go to the board of zoning appeals. And then, uh, again, just going back to that landscape issue, eleven seventy-one eleven E two does allow for off-street parking in the front, side, and rear yards, um, if screened. So again, just that screening is an important thing as we look at the project going forward. And then, uh, the last two items, um, eleven seventy-one E four D requires site lighting. Um, so future plans do need to provide details for site lighting and the photometrics being provided, whether it's wall packs or whatever. Do need to have those identified and the photometrics identified on the plan. And I just made a comment, the commission has historically reported a maximum of one foot candle of lighting at non-residential property lines. And then finally, the, uh, the stormwater management basin, it does show that being enclosed with six-foot-tall chain link fence. Um, so I felt, A, the details would need to be provided for that fence, and then really the preference would be to more of a decorative type fence, some sort of white board-on-board fence style. If possible, it'd be good that it be graded to avoid the fence altogether. Um, so with that said, uh, tonight, the planning commission, um, really can't take any action on the request until the, um, parking issue is dealt with in some form or fashion. Either it's shown as hard-surfaced on the plan and developed as part of this plan, or it's taken to the board of zoning appeals and, and granted a variance to, um, to, uh, have it be gravel and have it be land banked or removed entirely from the plan.
Could I speak on the, uh, parking issue for a moment?
Please do.
Um, first, with this type of site, I would, the buildings themselves are the parking spaces. I mean, many people store vehicles and cars inside of these units. Um, so I understand maybe the plans, and I'd have to look at the plans again to see it. Typically, there aren't forty cars or typically there aren't even two or three cars parked on site at any given time. Anybody who has a car or a vehicle is usually parked inside the unit itself.
And I think, uh, you know, from, from a true operation standpoint, yeah, I, I, having parking seems kind of, kind of a waste. No one's going to park in a parking lot and walk to their unit, you know? I assume these are all like front-loaded, there's not, it's not like, uh, this is not internal storage, there's not like a hallway. So, yeah, you're, you're, you're parking it for anything, so I think there's probably a good reason for it. Unfortunately, you know, code is the code, and it's not written for every certain application. That's where maybe the BZA would come in, uh, to be able to give you a, a break on, but.
Well, the one other comment I will make, I know it shows on the plans as gravel, but we're planning on asphalt. The same as what our other location is, it's all asphalt, and we would be asphalting, you know, the areas down the buildings anyways.
And, Mr. Chair, good night.
So I was looking at, excuse me, I'm probably breaking up a little bit, I'm trying to, the joys of doing these meetings. You don't have a big giant table in front of you. Um, so I was looking at your, your spacing and layout. Um, you could actually go to a zero setback along the railroad tracks. And I'm wondering, if you did that, can you just allocate and space your buildings a little bit further apart and allocate a parking space in front of each unit?
Well, in a sense, each, you, I suppose you could, but practically speaking, it'd be kind of foolish, because you know, people do park in front of each other, you know, there's plenty of space in front of each unit to park.
Yeah, and I, and I, I understand, and I agree with you, and I agree with what Mr. Westbrook said. Just on the plan, if to avoid a variance, to avoid a variance, even a need to go request one, I think you could lay this out a little bit differently and, uh, and just show the space, whether it's going to be parked in or not. I understand right in front of the unit, you're going to have a space. It, I feel like you could probably accomplish it just by assuming a zero setback along the railroad tracks and laying out the, the buildings, space them out a little bit more, so you have more width in between them. Especially if you're planning on asphalt in that gravel, what's called gravel.
Yeah, well, the only concern for a zero setback is having access to both sides of the building, because they're units that face both sides of the building.
Ah, okay.
Could I ask a question, Kevin?
Sure.
Uh, you know, instead of trying to get for a variance for the parking, uh, Mr. France suggested a stipulation that there'll be no outdoor storage. I don't quite understand that, since it's not on the, uh, the applicant isn't even asking for outdoor storage. However, he's willing to asphalt the entire parcel, like he did his other parcel. Why not have, we not approve this with the stipulation that he'll asphalt the entire parcel? And that would take care of, of, of the problem of, uh, of, of gravel, of a gravel, uh, problem, the problem. How about that, a stipulation? Would that do it?
I think that might solve the prob, uh, yeah, I guess the areas, you know, the, at least the plan that we're looking at from February tenth shows, you know, on the south side, thirty-one land bank parking spots shown as gravel. The north side, eleven land bank parking spots shown as gravel. And, uh, you know, if you're saying you're going to asphalt that, well, then you could accommodate the parking and that issue goes away. Is that what I'm hearing?
I would think so, yes.
That is correct, because those land bank spaces provide forty-two spaces, and I think he said code is forty-one or was it forty-two?
It was one or the other, I forget which.
Forty, but it was there, and we had made account for it.
So I mean, I guess, you know, maybe your plans, your, 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 at least your intentions have changed since the plan. So, you know, the areas that are marked as gravel and wanted to be land banked, you could actually do it, and then that issue goes away.
Correct, that's what Mr. Crash indicated, that he would just go ahead and pave that with asphalt and mark them out as spaces, and everybody will be happy.
Well, well, how, how about a stipulation? If we're going to approve this thing with, with the stipulation, we're going to make one for, we're no outdoor storage, but stipulate that you would, uh, asphalt the entire parcel. So when you come back someday for outdoor storage, we wouldn't have to face the, the, the gravel all over again. It would be, the whole place would be asphalt. Is that a possibility?
I don't want to grade it the entire parcel, because there's a significant portion that's not going to need to be asphalted at all.
Oh, okay.
But I certainly have, um, you know, asphalting the areas around the building and where it shows for the parking space, that I certainly would have no trouble agreeing to.
Right, and whatever we would come back for with outdoor stor, storage, we would show that as asphalt pavement.
Okay. Um. All right, um, I guess, before we dig too deep into anything else, I, I just had to throw that there. Um, Mr. Gelati, do you have comments as well? All right, you do. Is there anything you want to talk about with those?
Yeah, I can go through them, uh, quickly here for the commission. Uh, you guys have probably seen my comment letter from, uh, March fourth, uh, seven comments. Um, uh, the last three of which really can be handled, uh, administratively, but the first four, we should chat about just for a moment. Uh, there is a stream across the northerly portion of the property, so, uh, that's subject to the city's repairing and setback code. Um, and the code chapter is quoted here, and, and, uh, in that code chapter indicates that the, uh, size of the setback is based on the, the drainage area or watershed, uh, to that particular piece of property. Uh, that is, uh, the way that the, the code is written. Uh, so the written code would govern, uh, over any of these other maps that may be out there. Uh, so I'd ask that the applicant, um, establish the, uh, drainage area to this property and show the appropriate, uh, repairing and setback on the plans. Uh, lighting plan is needed, uh, so I'd ask that that be part of the next to middle. Uh, we already talked about asphalt paving, so I would ask that that be indicated on the next to middle. And, uh, then as far as, uh, potential wetlands on the property is concerned, uh, that would be. Yeah, there's some feedback there on the meeting, uh, somebody may want to mute, but, um, as far as wetlands are concerned, uh, the site would need to be, uh, visited and, uh, any wetlands delineated by a, a professional wetland scientist, uh, that is, uh, also in the code. Uh, and that would certainly govern over any of the other county mapping that may exist. And, and I would want to stress to everyone on the meeting, including the applicant, uh, that any of those types of, um, county or other level of government, uh, aerial wetland mapping is, is not an official delineation, shouldn't be used as such. Um, can only lead to frustration on everyone's part, quite honestly. Um, so, uh, we do need a, uh, an official delineation by a wetland scientist. Uh, the last three items, uh, can be handled administratively. Thanks, Chairman.
All right, um, I don't know if there's any other, uh, getting your guys' response back to some of this. I think we've probably talked through a lot of it. Um, any of those that you guys feel you need to talk about, or? Or I can open it up to the commission for questions and comments. All right, commission, uh, any other, any of you guys have, uh, questions?
Nope.
Okay, so I guess if, you know, I, it sounds like the parking, I think, is, is, can be remedied, the parking issue will go away. Um, if you actually pave those areas and you've got enough spots, it sounds like that one's not a big deal. Um, a couple of the other things, site lighting, I'm sure you guys can handle that. The five hundred foot issue, and that is, that, that ties to, is that just for any, is that tied to the, to the, the site plan approval, or is that to the, uh? Um, conditional zoning certificate, Mr. France? Five hundred thousand foot.
Yeah, I think, uh, it's really tied to the, to the site plan.
Okay, so I'm looking at that, and I, you guys probably saw I had the aerial up here when I was doing a couple of measurements, yeah. You got, you got two seventy-one on this side of it, yes, we're with, you know, we're over five hundred feet, we're within the thousand, but geez, you got the freeway in the middle. Uh, other, going the other direction, you know, close this house, six hundred and thirty feet, but you got the railroad tracks. So I don't think, in my mind, that relaxing the restrictions to be at five hundred feet from a residential property is, is a big deal. I don't think we have to be, uh, play hardball with the thousand foot and make them go to BZA. But if somebody else in the commission feels differently, you know, you know, feel free to speak up.
I would just like to point out, as you're going towards the residential area, the White Spruce Drive area, there's, I believe, there's also a sound barrier wall on the other side of the highway too, right?
I, I think you're right, I think it does carry up through there.
Correct, it does.
Yeah, so we're really pretty blocked off between, you know, those things, so I, you know, sir, I was, I'm guessing you, you don't have an issue with that.
No, I don't. I, I looked at that when I drove it, and you can also see it on, uh, I'm looking at Bing Maps right now, there is definitely a privacy wall there, a sound wall, but it functions as a privacy wall as well, so no, I don't have an issue.
Okay, cool. So that one, um,
Mr. Westbrook?
Yes.
I'd just stand corrected, you should attach it to the conditional zoning certificate because actually that is where it's referenced in 117118, so.
So there's two issues to kind of go with that now.
Yeah, yeah, you'd want to, um, opine that the 500 feet, uh, minimum's acceptable, which will allow this development to go forward. And, uh, and then the, um, no outdoor storage pursuant to the 21021 plan. So those two issues, uh, you would want to add to the conditional zoning certificate.
Okay. All right, um, landscaping, uh, I know we've talked a bunch about that, or at least Mr. France gave some thoughts, and there was the letter that was read from, uh, your neighbors to the south. I don't know if it's, if we should probably read that into, Susan, if you don't mind, we should probably read that into the record as part of this meeting as well, even though it was presented in the public hearing. If you don't mind.
No, I don't mind at all. It's from Craig Busner with standard signs. And, uh, he requests that where the property lines meet, that the fencing is a privacy fence and it is tall as the city will allow. In addition, if possible, please position some landscaping mounds and a plant, and plant pine trees near the property line. That's it.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
So I'm, I mean, I'm guessing, you know, what we could probably do tonight is we'll address the conditional zoning certificate for sure. Um, Mr. Francis, is a preliminary site plan approval appropriate for this? And let them come back with dealing with some of these other issues, you know, show the parking differently, uh, a new landscaping plan. Those are the big ones, uh, you know, sight lighting ideally, but that could also be done administrative at some point. Um, but between the landscaping and the fencing, come back with what they are proposing. But the rest.
I think, uh, sorry, um, I do think that, uh, now that they've indicated the parking won't be gravel, that it'll be hard surfaced. Um, I think that the commission certainly could issue a preliminary plan approval this, this evening. Um, and with regard to, with regard to the desire to, um, have some fencing on that south property line, you just have to be careful, there is, it looks as though there's some easement that's gonna be dealt with there. So, um, you could add some fencing, but just need to probably stay out of the easement area.
Okay, and, and, you know, just because that letter was read, that doesn't mean, you know, you have to do what, what was asked. But, you know, at least it'd be good to consider what your neighbors are asking for, um, as you put together, uh, a site, a landscaping plan, and, and the city would definitely work with you if you want to do some back and forth, with what, you know, we usually default to the administration on what, what, what they would require in terms of the landscaping.
And Mr. West?
Yes.
Sorry, um, I did want to ask on that fence around the pond. Is that necessary? Can, can, is it possible to avoid it, that chain link fence? I just think the look on freeway drive is not a desired look. Is it, I'm assuming that fence is placed there because the grading requires it, is that?
Well, the fencing's there because the whole storage unit facility is enclosed by a fence. So it, we can control access to it through the gated entrance.
So you're just enclosing the whole, the whole site?
Correct.
Because you need the security.
Correct.
It's not there because the, the basin itself needs to be fenced. You're just including it inside the site.
It does seem cleaner that way.
Do you have chain link fence on the back of the site along the railroad tracks?
Actually, we have the fence going up to the building. So the building itself is the fence along that, the railroad back there.
Yeah, okay. And is there a way to avoid running the, the fence? I guess you're, there isn't, huh? Along the freeway drive front edge?
It doesn't look like it does.
The, the fence starts at the north edge of the proposed storage building on Freeway Drive. It wraps around the basin from there.
Yeah.
So the fence could be extended, I'm sorry, Michael Wolwin, Wolwin Engineering, uh, the fence could be run across the top of those 10 or 11 parking stalls and return back to the building and therefore would not have the detention basin inside the fence.
Right, but then it wouldn't be accessible to maintain it very easily because you have that ditch on Freeway Drive. So that was why I kind of put it around the detention basin, so you could at least get to it from inside the property.
You could add a gate inside the property, right?
Yeah, you could. I mean, just more gates, that's all.
Yeah, I just think that the, I mean, again, this is up to the commission. I just think that look from freeway drive, if it can be avoided, you should. And if you can put a gate on the in, inside of the property for maintenance purposes to get to the pond, and then you could really do some nice things with some landscaping and such in front of the pond. That would just be a nice view from freeway drive. So I would recommend to the commission that you avoid having that. As the applicant, um, stated a minute ago, you could fence around those parking spaces and, uh, you could accomplish maintenance through a gate on the inside of the, the property.
Yeah, I was, I, I didn't pick up on that, that, that they were using much the front building and the back building as, as part of the fence, basically. So, I mean, doing that, I mean, you've got rid of a lot of fence already. If you could wrap it between, you know, the parking and the, the basin and reduce fence that much more, not, not to serve for the cost savings, but just, you know, it would look better. And really, your only significant piece of fence would be between the basin and then on the south side. That, that would be great, and I guess that'd be something, you know, if you guys would consider. Um, I think it would be nice, but we're not, I'm not saying you, you gotta do it, but that would be something that would probably improve the, the visibility or the look of the whole thing.
Honestly, I, this is Joe Crash, I would prefer doing the fence that way. I think it'll look better.
Okay. Well, I guess, you know, that could be something you guys could work on after you get this. But I think unless the commission feels differently, I think minimizing the fence is a good thing.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
Okay. All right, so, um, I'm sorry, Mr. Rodeck, do you have any, any comments or anything? I haven't asked you. I don't know if you're talking, don't hear you. Are you there, Mr. Rodeck? I would probably, if you have any thoughts, unmute, but, um, I guess the commission, do you guys have any other thoughts as we get closer here to the end of this one, I think? Doesn't sound like it. Okay, so maybe we'll, let's take on the conditional zoning certificate first. I'd like to make a motion to approve the conditional zoning certificate, uh, with the stipulation that, that there is no outdoor storage based on the, the February 10th, 2021 plan and that the 500-foot minimum distance to residential is acceptable.
I'd second that.
All right. Any further discussion, any, uh, clarification needed, Mr. France? I think you say that it needs to be mentioned.
Yeah, I think I, I heard you say that that 500 feet was pursuant to section 117118. Somebody's scraping paint.
A little noise from somebody here.
Well, I'm, I'm trying to use on my recorder here, so that's what I'm trying to do, but, uh, go ahead.
Okay. Um, any other discussion on, on the conditional zoning certificate? All right, uh, here none, uh, Susan, could you do a roll call?
Sure, Mr. Westbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Siavon?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Velada?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Excellent. All right. Um, and then, uh, I guess I, I can make a motion, or if one of you guys wants to make a motion for the preliminary plan approval.
I think you better do it.
Okay. I don't know for, for this that we, Mr. France, do we need to say anything specific? You know, preliminary plan approval, you know, they know what issues we, they need to work on to come back for final? Or do we, do we need to mention some of these things in the motion?
I, I just think that the one item you should mention is that the preliminary plan approval, um, is contingent upon the applicant's, um, uh, the applicant's, um, I guess testimony this evening, that they will, uh, pave the gravel, um, that's indicated as gravel parking spaces, that that will be paved.
Okay.
And I think that's fine, just because I, I recommended to, um, essentially table the item because, you know, that's really a big issue that need to go to BZA. But if they're gonna pave that, uh, I think the preliminary plan is subject to that, um, being hard surfaced. And then the fencing, you may want to note, um, the fencing be, um, gate access internal to the site, from the site to the pond, and fencing along freeway drive would be removed.
Is that, is that something that we want to let them work on, make sure? I mean, it sounds like that's what they want to do. I think if, if for some reason they come back that they can't find a way to do it, or there's, there's logistical reasons for some reason, why do we want to tie them to that? Or would, would, would a plan that still encompasses that, but maybe has to be landscaped more because there's more fence, um, would that be acceptable? Yeah, that's, I'm wondering, do we need, do we want to mention that and tie it to the preliminary plan approval?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that, um, I mean, I think tying it to the preliminary plan approval is fine. I'm looking at the plan, it's definitely something that can be accomplished. I, I don't see how it couldn't be accomplished. Um, I suppose if they, if the applicant goes back and there's some logistical piece that we're not seeing here this evening, um, you can override that in your final plan approval. So I, I would, I would still put it on, attach it to the preliminary plan, so it's clear what your intent is.
Okay. All right. Um, then I'll make a motion for preliminary plan approval, uh, with the condition, uh, or with the notation that, uh, they have agreed, uh, to pave the areas marked as land bank parking spaces for, with a hard surface, uh, for hard surface park, parking. And that the fencing, uh, will be minimized by, uh, eliminating the fence around the stormwater management basin and, uh, accessing it with a gate from the internal property. Is there a second?
I'd second that.
All right, any more discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I, I believe I heard you, um, also state that, uh, then all the remaining comments in, um, the planner's report, as well as the engineer's report, will need to be addressed prior to final approval.
Correct, I hear that correctly.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other, any other discussions? Joe liked it. All right, Suzy, would you like to do a roll call, please?
Mr. Westbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Siavon?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Velada?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
All right. Um, well, thank you, Mr. Crash and, and your, and your team there. Thanks for, uh, working with us on this. And, uh, I think, I think this will end up working out well. I know a couple of different things have tried to go on this property and they've run into issues. This seems like a good use and you guys seem to be, uh, wanting to do it the right way, you know, and do what needs to be done, and we appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
So hopefully we'll see you, see you next meeting or the next, you know, within one or two meetings, uh, get this wrapped up.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Back to the agenda. All right, last is, uh, Dominion Energy, um, with a building replacement on East Aurora Road and Alexandria Way. Who's here, uh, representing Dominion this evening?
Hello, hi, my, um, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Aray Twai, I'm with Dominion Energy Ohio. I'm a project manager for a station replacement. Mike Antonius and also Andrew Lanawan is also attending to this meeting as well. They're both from Dominion as well.
Great, great.
We have.
Oh, go ahead. I was just gonna say, why don't you guys go ahead and give us an overview of what's going on? I know you have been here before, similar to the first item. You had approval for at least part of this or something and
Correct.
apps and your plans, it looked like they've changed a little bit, so go ahead and, and let us know what, what your plan is here.
We have two proposals on the agenda. Number five is replacing an existing building in our existing station on East Aurora Road. We have a plan to replace our station, including the building. And in 2019, we had, uh, received an approval from the planning commission in order to proceed with our permit application. But before we proceed with the permitting, we realized that we, we may need some additional improvements done as well. And that's the item number six on the agenda. We'd like to also install a, what we call a valve header, um, north of our station, uh, at 1091 East Aurora Road and Alexandria Way. Alexandria Way is the private driveway north of the station, behind the station. And our, uh, valve header is going to be installed within our Dominion pipeline easement north of this pri, uh, private driveway.
And I don't know if you're one of the ones, can you see the screen or is it not, you're one of the ones that can't see?
I can't see the screen.
Yeah, I've got Google brought up here and I believe, okay, so here's the existing facility right in between the Conrad's and the office building, yeah, I'm showing that.
Yes.
North of that, pretty much straight north on the other side of Alexandria Way, maybe a little bit to the west is where you're proposing the, uh, pump header?
Correct.
Pump header?
Yes.
For the group, that's, that's over in this vicinity for folks who can see. Those who can't, use your imagination. All right, yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead, you can continue.
So there will be, uh, again, there will be two locations. These are actually two projects, different projects, but they will go simultaneously at the same time. Uh, it's for, for the same purpose. We just didn't have enough space at the station. That's why we had to install the valve header at a different location, north of the station. We're basically asking for a permit for our replacement project at the station and asking for a permit to install a new valve header at this, at this location.
Okay, okay. Well, um, Mr. Francis, would you like to start? Because I know this is, this is another one that's, uh, conditional use approval, uh, conditional zoning certificate, as well as a plan review.
Yep, sorry, I started talking and I was.
Never been.
Yeah, that's, uh, that's probably the, probably the most difficult thing of online meetings, huh? You always want to talk and you're muted, although I think my wife does it to me on purpose. Um, so, uh, yeah, we have viewed this and I do think this is a, a real good, um, a real good project. It'll be a big improvement of, uh, of, uh, changing the building out on that location. And just, you know, I know that the applicant, I believe, worked with the city designer administration. It'll be a nice improvement. There's just a few items I think we need to go through. And yes, a conditional zoning certificate is required. Um, but I don't think it's anything that, um, the commission really needs to, um, have too many stipulations on. Really, this is more of a site planning issue. There were some things, uh, when we looked at this, uh, previously, um, and I'll go through that in my comments, my report dated February 28th. So, um, one of the, uh, one of the items that we looked at previously, the setbacks, the parcel's only 62 feet wide. Um, so you really can't achieve compliance because the parcel is so narrow. Um, and I think that issue was previous. Um, and I think that issue was previously approved. Um, either there was a variance or something, um, where the law director might have been involved, but I think that issue was cleared up, but I just wanted to call attention that was something that we we dealt with last time, I'm not entirely sure how they, that was overcome. Um, but the site is the site, and it is nonconforming, as I point out. Um, the code requires 30,000 square feet, and this parcel is just a little over 9,100 square feet. Um, again, I believe that was dealt with previously. Uh, really the issue that I, I wanted to talk through, um, primarily is the, the, um, barbed wire chain link fence around the station. Um, planning commission does have to approve that, section 71, 117116G2 does require the commission to take action on that. Um, I would much prefer to see something a little more decorative, I understand the need for it. Um, even if, you know, even if there was a compromise between barbed wire and doing the, you know, like a powder coated black fence that has the sharp knots that terminate the top of the fence, but eliminate the barbed wire piece would be helpful. I just think that that's not necessarily the look, I understand that Dominion needs, um, you know, security, but at the same time, um, you probably can achieve that and maybe have a little little different look than that, the top of that with that barbed wire. Um, so, you know, there's things like security cameras, and again, that other, um, black powder coated fence that has the, the sharp, um, I don't know what the technical name is, but knots at the top of the fence, along with maybe some cameras. Um, just a, maybe, again, just some consideration to avoid that look of the barbed wire chain link fence. Um, and then, uh, the building itself, um, I think is a significant upgrade. Um, it'll have a gabled roof and a brick facade, so that's a, it'll look nice, um, to see that changed out. And then, uh, this coordination with the city engineer for stormwater management is needed. And then finally, um, with regard to landscaping, um, this was something I noted last time, I would like to see a little more formalized landscape plan, a separate sheet, um, pursuant to 117104 and 117102 of the code. Um, should have a mixture of deciduous and coniferous species, and really that'll be helpful to soften some of the look. Again, I'm sure Dominion doesn't want, um, a heavy landscape screening for security purposes, but some strategic locations and maybe something other than just the six foot tall junipers, um, a mixture of some, some different vegetation would be helpful. Um, so, uh, I do recommend approval, subject to the comments noted in my report.
Well, Mr. France? Um, two years back when we went through this application, I had contacted our security, and we did contact them again. It's two years back, I think I was talking with Mr. Nino Monaco, and he was recommending the same thing, black wrought iron fencing, instead of the barbed wire fence. Our security will not approve that. I, we will do anything and everything that you ask for, but on the security for the safety of our facilities, we don't have any flexibility. I was going to suggest, maybe if we, if we can try to arrange more landscaping around the station, would that help?
Yeah, I do think that that would help, um, so they, they ruled out the the sharp, um, I don't know what the technical name is, but that, that, uh, the, the, instead of the, um, barbed wire at the top, there's the sharp knots that
I know what you mean, yeah. Yes, they don't have any flexibility on that.
Okay, what about, uh, powder coating the fence, though? That's, so if you had to stick with the barbed wire at the top, would you be willing to powder coat the fence, black?
I, I can't, I don't think that would be a problem, I can't check with the security and get back to you on that, I don't think it will be a problem, but, yeah.
Yeah, that won't change the, anything as far as visibility into the, into the compound. It just has a, a little bit of a softer look from the exterior being it's, you know, a black powder coating.
True, yeah.
That with some landscaping, I'm, if it's an absolute must for security reasons, I do understand that, and and again, I, I'm just the consultant, so the commission may not feel strongly, but I think as much as we could do on appearance would be great, so if they're willing to powder coat it, that would be very helpful.
I understand, I can check with our security and get back to the commission.
Hey, Mr. France, this is Mike Antonius.
Hi, Mike.
Hi, um, just, just so I'm clear, is the powder coating on what type of fence?
It's chain link, but it's just powder coated.
Okay, yeah, 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 and then, uh, there is also the option of, uh, I think it's vinyl coated, uh, fabric. So there's, there's that opportunity as well, but yeah, that, that would be something in either scenario, if it's the vinyl coating or, um, otherwise, just to get the chain link, um, a different look, that's certainly something that we, I'm sure can, uh, make happen.
Yeah, I think, um, the only thing, so the vinyl, that's fine, if you're talking about a black vinyl, um, basically coated, looks like chain link, but it's black vinyl, that's fine. Just not that fabric, or it's fabric slats, that, that wouldn't be good.
No, no.
That's more like a screen.
Yeah, it would be the vinyl coating on the actual chain itself, not, not a fabric across the, the chain link.
Yeah, good, yeah, just, yeah, just to remove that galvan, because if you look at that, that view that Mr. Westbrook just showed, you know, with the chain link, the problem is that that galvanized look isn't very attractive, and you see the buildings around this area, they're a lot of investment, and then if you, Mr. Westbrook, if you just zoom in, you'll see how it's that fence is, you know, it's rusting, and that, that look can be avoided, um, just by doing either the vinyl or the powder coating either way.
Mr. France, this is David with Dominion Energy.
Go ahead.
So just, uh, kind of give you some background history, our fencing requirement, what we use internally is the, is it's kind of like a dipped, um, fencing. So there would be no slats, as mentioned, and it would be a coated fence. And typically, we use green, if the city would have, uh, a requirement on the color, we can look in to see if, if black was an option for the dipping of the fence, but usually our suppliers provided a green, um, dip fence, and it's a, it's a one inch by one inch mesh fence. And it is seven feet tall with the one foot, um, one foot of three strands at the top. And then as far as the actual barbed wire strands themselves, we've never done anything like that, but something that we can investigate to see what we can do as far as the appearance of the three strands at the top of the fence. As mentioned.
Good, and I think the city appreciates that, I mean, I know that the administration is excited about, you know, seeing the, the site upgraded, and it will be a big, it'll make a big difference, so anything you can do is appreciated, and, um, you know, I think, green, black, I mean, um, that can be discussed with the commission, I I always have a preference of black, but that's, you know, that's up to the commission.
Yeah, just looking at your street view there, I mean, my personal opinion, you know, green I think would look nicer in that area than, than black with the, the vegetation to the east and the background vegetation that we'll be seeing from the road, green would kind of blend with everything. At least six months of our climate.
Yeah, yeah, true.
It's a darker green, right?
Uh, we, we can supply a picture of, of fencing we've used in the past.
Yeah, I mean, green is probably okay, if that's what your, your main manufacturer gives you, and it's worked and it's looked good in other places, I mean, there is a lot of grass around this area, it might fade into a little bit better, and with, uh, landscaping, if you're doing, you know, a little more extensive landscaping, you know, we could probably live with the barbed wire. Yeah, if you did, yeah, do some kind of coating or whatever, like, like Mr. France is talking about, and the heavy landscaping. Um, uh, maybe jump over, Mr. July, did you have comments on this as well?
No comments at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, okay. Um, commission, questions for you guys, you guys got any?
Uh, I have a question.
Go ahead.
We were talking, uh, we were talking about, um, uh, this, some of these issues were addressed previously, do we know for a fact that the 62 foot setback has been approved, and the, um, the small lot size has been approved? Do we know that for a fact? Mr. France alluded to it supposedly, I, I hear it's been taken care of, I think it's been taken care of, has it been taken care of? Do we know that?
I don't, go ahead.
I can provide you the email that I received from the city of Macedonia regarding our application was approved, and we could have, uh, from 2019, and we got to go ahead to proceed with our permit, if you like.
I guess if you've got that email, we should, you know, the city should have it as well, they could provide it to us, but, um, I guess, you know, we could, we could do a little bit more digging, just to, just to make sure that that's, those, those i's are dotted and t's are crossed. Um, who must have come up to some kind of, they must have come to some kind of agreement before to get their approval. Okay, you're gonna say something, Mr. France?
Yeah, I think most likely what happened in, and, uh, and I'm comfortable with this, I, I think the site's considered nonconforming, and Dominion is not increasing any of that nonconformity, in fact, they're really eliminating some of it. Um, so as such, if they're not increasing the nonconformity, I think you can approve it, um, as is. And I don't see an increase in the site area, if that's my understanding. The fence is exactly what currently exists, you're just replacing new fence.
Correct.
Yeah, so I think that you're not increasing the nonconformity, my gut is probably that's what the determination was made last time. Um, I'm comfortable if the commission is to approve it in that, um, in that vein, and internally they can look into that. My guess is that's really what, what the issue was a while back.
Okay, that, that, that sounds reasonable, it sounds like it should be right. Um, any other, any other questions, commission?
So, I had a question on the valve header site, but are we doing, are we talking about that separate, or is that part of the discussion about the border station?
I think it's all one, we've got two issues, and one's the conditional zoning certificate, and the other one's these two sites. So, yeah, if you've got questions on that, go ahead.
So just, I was just curious, just for, if nothing else, just for public record, the valve head, is it a replacement, are you adding something there? And I was just asking if the folks from Dominion could speak to why they're doing that, is this just a regular maintenance thing? Are they trying to solve a problem, you know, what, what's the rationale there?
It's not a replacement, it's a new improvement. Uh, basically, we have a transmission line travels south to north that feeds this station that feeds the residential areas in the city of Macedonia. Whenever we have to work on our transmission line, um, we have to shut in the station and feed the residents through backfeed through other facilities. Once we install this new valve header, uh, when we maintain the line, we can either feed the station through the north of this valve header, or the south of this valve header, and, uh, the station will always be in service.
So overall, for the average resident that's, uh, receiving the utility from that area, that's a, that's a benefit to them if you do this project?
Correct.
Cool, thank you, appreciate it.
I think, I can't see it real well, but for those who can see, I think we're in this, they're probably removing some of this trees and things like that in this area to get it in that area, but it's kind of right behind, right behind.
Just pointing out that you are correct there, some of those trees have been removed that are within the Dominion Energy easement area.
Okay.
Um, we were, we were looking to, um, last year, we were just gonna do the work on the station since we had the permit, and then do this valve header this year, and then go through the permitting process with the city this year. Um, for a lot of circumstances, everything got pushed to do one combined project this year, to also, um, to coincide with another project that is not within the city of Macedonia, and allow us to take down that transmission line to do, um, a couple different projects at the same time, to lessen the potential impact on communities.
Okay. That sounds like this is a good thing.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, looking at the picture of the, the building that you're putting in to replace these, a much better, I mean, it's, you know, it's a brick, it's got a gable, it's, it's much better, you know, the existing building that's out there, looks like a little bomb shelter or something, you know, this is, this will be much more attractive, it'll be, you know, for what you can see, it'll, it'll be much better. I guess, Al, if there's any other questions or comments from anybody on the committee or administration? Here none, um, unless, we could address the, uh, conditional zoning certificate first. Um, I don't think there's any, anything we need to tie to this, is that correct, Mr. France? I don't think there's anything on the conditional zoning certificate. There may have been a couple of things to mention on the site plan, but not this.
No, I, I don't, I think it's all site plan related.
Okay, and I'll make a motion to approve the conditional zoning certificate. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Alright, uh, any more discussion? Uh, Susan, could you do a roll call?
Sure, Mr. Westbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Chivon?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Didn't hear you, Mr. Cox, if you're still there. I'm not seeing him on the list anymore. Oh wait, no, no, that's not him.
He was on there, but
Yeah, I forget if he dropped out, at one point he was having a little bit of trouble, I thought.
Okay, um, Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Velada?
Yes.
Alright, well, that's one thing down, um, the second would be the site plan, and I think the critical thing with the site plan is just to, uh, mention the, uh, agreement to, you know, co- uh, coating for the fence, to allow the barbed wire fence and, and some kind of coating, or, you know, of green or black, and for a landscape plan to come back to the city for administrative review. Am I missing anything, Mr. France, if I make a motion with that?
Um, I think that's, uh, I think that's accurate, Mr. Westbrook, and, um, the, uh, administration can work with Dominion on the exact color of that coating, and and can approve that if, if acceptable, approve the landscaping internally.
Alright, then I will make a motion to approve the site plan, final site plan approval, um, with the condition that the Dominion comes back for a final landscaping approval administratively, and to work out the final details of the fencing administratively.
I'll second it.
Alright, Mr. Roberts, any more discussion?
I just had a quick question before I lose the guys from Dominion, um, when would you guys start this project, and how long does it take to finish it?
We plan to start mid-May, and it should, probably, it's probably gonna take about three months to complete.
Oh, okay. Great.
Even though we are starting the project mid-May, actual construction out on-site uh, will begin June 8th, correct, or I? We will start fabricating offsite, but the actual construction on-site will begin on June 8th.
Okay. Alright, any more discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh,
Yes, yes.
I, I'm, I think Mr. France addressed it, addressed it, but we are going on the assumption that all these other BZA issues were taken care of previously.
Yeah, yeah, and we believe
What if they're not? What if they haven't been, I'm just throwing that out.
Well, maybe that, I mean, that could be, uh, I think Mr. France, his, his whether they were worked out differently before, his, I think his, his view on it now is that these, this is a, uh, what were you, what do you call it, uh, nonconforming? Uh, sorry, Mr. France.
Yeah, it's a, it's a Yeah, it's a noncon- Yeah, it's a, it's a, yeah, it's a nonconforming lot width and I I think, again, I
Legal nonconforming was your word.
Yeah, legal nonconforming. I don't know if, you know, if there was, really, it's a zoning administration issue and my suspicion is the zoning administrator determined that the nonconformity wasn't being increased. That would be my guess. Maybe there was a variance, but it doesn't sound like there was. And and if not, I think the fact that the site is not being increased would not increase the nonconformity and you probably don't need a variance. So we can look at that administratively.
But I think, I think
I don't have any issue with the site, I just want to make sure we're not doing something that's beyond our authority, put it that way.
It sounds like Mr. France is comfortable with that, you know, unless something else comes back really weird. I think, you know, we can go on that assumption that that he feels that the legal nonconforming without increasing any kind of area makes this acceptable. And, you know, go on that professional opinion, as long as everybody's okay with that. Any other, any other questions? All right, Susan, could you do a roll call?
Sure, Mr. Westbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Chivon?
Yes.
Mr. Cox? I see him on.
I see him here, too.
I see his name, okay, Mr. Valada?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
All right, well, thank you, guys, and got your approvals worked with the administration to get those final little details worked out. And we appreciate your your efforts.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Cox texted in saying he can no longer, said his words orally vote, but he can hear us. He says he votes yes for both motions.
Oh, okay, good.
Good. All right, I think that's the last thing on our agenda unless somebody, Susan, or anybody else has any other issues.
I'm good.
Okay. Next meeting is scheduled for April 19th. That sounds good, it sounds like it could be another busy one. All right, well, someone make a want to make a motion to adjourn or let somebody else do some motion tonight?
I motion adjourn.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thanks, guys, talk to you soon.
Thank you.
All right, take care.
Take care.
Take care.
Good night.
Bye.